Mr. Peters for filling in on short notice.
(laughing).
Okay, I'll now go ahead and call this meeting to order. The October 16th, 2023 regular board meeting of the Huntington School Board of Trustees. Under item A4, we'll begin with a roll call of members who are present this evening.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Melcher?
Here.
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Yarker?
Here.
Mr. Wall is absent. Mrs. Hine is absent.
All right, under item A5, Mr. Trout, are there any proposed revisions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, I do. I have a few here. Number one is addition to consent agenda items F-15, new ECA employees Cory Troutner, girls wrestling coach Huntington North High School, Scott Bauer, eighth grade girls basketball coach, Nick Bauer, head wrestling coach Crestview Middle School junior vikes. Number two, addition to consent agenda item F-11 unpaid leave of absence, Michaela Grizzle, paraprofessional Huntington North High School approximately October 2 to 2023 through December 22nd, 2023. And then removing in D2, we need to remove the Huntington North High School band drum majors and new uniforms, please.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion regarding the revisions to the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we revise the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to revise the agenda. All right, the motion passes five to zero, so the agenda is revised as requested. Now go to item B1, public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board, usually on an agenda item that we have this evening. No one has signed the purple sheet to address the board, but if anyone missed that and wants to address the board, please come forward now to the yellow microphone up here. And no one having come forward, we'll go ahead and move to C1, core values discussion.
This is a part of our board that we enjoy, our board meetings that we enjoy, where we honor our students and staff that have gone above and beyond. They have demonstrated high expectations, high achievement, and accountability, and we're excited to recognize the individuals tonight and share before you their work and what they have done, and so privileged to be able to have that honor, to be able to share out their accomplishments. The first one we have is Mr. Pat McLaughlin.
(inaudible).
Pat, I count, Mr. McLaughlin, I count it a privilege and honor to serve with you on our leadership team in our district. I truly am. And as I was sitting here reading what I'm going to share about you, I couldn't help but think of kids don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And that resonated with me as I was reading this. I also thought about every student every day. Let me just read. Mr. McLaughlin is being honored tonight for his outreach to students to make sure they know that he is always there for them, no matter what. Students have recognized that Pat is someone they can count on and go to in time of need. Thank you for your servant's heart and your willingness to make a difference in the lives of our students, even after hours when it was time for you to go home and spend time with your family. When students were in need, you were there and you rose to the occasion and stepped forth to help these students out. And for that, I counted again a privilege and honor to serve with you, Pat, in this district. What a pleasure it is to have you as the high school principal, and I thank you for that dedicated service and your servant's heart. Pat McLaughlin, thank you.
(applause). They weren't talking about you, Pat.
(inaudible).
That was a pat.
Okay, next up, as Mrs. Gray is getting them lined up there, we have our eighth grade Crestview Middle School band students. We'll make sure that they're lined up and ready to go before I read.
Yep.
We got them?
Yep.
Our eighth grade Crestview Middle School band students, we want to honor Becca Bruce, Kristen Plaster, Levi Skiles, and Aiden Wolford.
Levi?
Are being honored tonight for their outstanding performances to earn a spot on the Indiana Band Association All-Region Honor Band. Band directors have the opportunity to nominate students through a process that provides an excellent opportunity for students to have their talents recognized, perform with other outstanding young musicians, and work with highly respected music educators and conductors. And we congratulate them tonight. Super job.
(inaudible). Congratulations, gentlemen. Proud of you. Well done. Thank you.
We'd also like to recognize Mr. Flanagan. Nash Flanagan is the band teacher at Crestview. Nash is being honored tonight for sharing his talents with his students through his amazing methods and practices that allow students to gain confidence in their abilities as young musicians. He is also being recognized for providing the opportunity to students to be a part of a bigger stage where students can showcase their talents. Nash Flanagan, congratulations.
(inaudible).
And I know parents that you would love to stay for this riveting board meeting. I know you would want to be here and be a part of that, students and staff, but you're dismissed. If you choose to, you're able to leave at this time, and that would not be a problem at all. Again, thank you and congratulations. That concludes our core values for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Okay.
Oh, for the, the uniform? I don't think they have them this evening, they said.
No.
Okay.
No.
Yes, that's all of it.
Yeah, they were going to present the drum major uniforms and all of that, but not tonight, it sounds like, so.
Yep.
So.
(inaudible).
I was looking forward to it, too, just so you know, so.
(inaudible).
Okay, well now go on to item D1, HNHS head baseball coach.
I've asked Mr. McLaughlin to come this evening and introduce our new Huntington North High School baseball coach to you. On a personal level, I cannot tell you how thrilled I am for Nolan that you're going to be our new coach. My, what I've watched with you and our interactions with our students, the young men of our baseball team are fortunate to call you coach, okay? And so, Pat, we'll turn it over to you as we recognize Nolan this evening.
Yes, I'd like to echo those comments of Mr. Trout. We are super excited that Nolan is going to be our new baseball coach. Watching him interact as a first-year teacher last year, and then on the field as a coach was a tremendous sight to see, and I'm excited for our boys and our baseball program. I am concerned as to whether or not kids will not get a skittle at first base or third base. But that was my only hangup with this, so. I am thrilled to introduce to you Nolan Remberg, our new head baseball coach.
First, I want to say thank you to you guys and administration for this opportunity. This has probably been a 26-year dream, running around on his baseball field a long time ago, so this is really cool for me. Definitely want to thank my wife, who's out there with little guy out there, for supporting me through this. This has been, like I said, been an awesome experience to go through. Couldn't think of a better place to start. The people that you have around us, in the building, outside of the building, second to none in terms of support staff, in terms of other coaches around me that have helped me in this, you know, month and a half that I've been the head guy. But thrilled for our guys. We've had a really good fall so far. It's been fun. We've had a lot of, a lot of guys out, which is good. Lot of guys that I didn't know or wanted to play baseball, wanted to play baseball, which is a good thing to, but we have a lot of good kids in our school, and a couple of them are pretty darn good at baseball, which has been fun to see. So, excited for the, for the opportunity, so.
Well, Nolan, introduce to us who you have here with you this evening, too, would you please?
Starting the left, it's my mom, Michelle, my wife Adriana, teaches second grade at Horace Mann, and then our two-month-old.
(laughing).
This is Brooks.
Good thing you don't look like grandpa.
Could somebody, could somebody turn Gary's mic off?
So, Nolan, again, congratulations. We are thrilled with that. We'd love to get a picture, if we could, please. So, Dad, if you want to come up here, too, and we'll get your picture taken. Congratulations. Just remember, you're not going to be able to sit in the back. You have to come up here. We're not going to let you sit in the back. Yeah.
(inaudible). We're thrilled. Yep. Yep, there you go. Take a couple without me. There you go. Yep.
All right, congratulations, Nolan. How about nice round of applause?
I got a Yankee hat.
A real little one.
All right, we removed D2, so we'll go to D3, AP Science Field Trip.
Well, aboard in our community, I'm thrilled to have Steve Park, our AP, Outstanding AP Science Teachers, with us tonight to talk about his, is also on your consent agenda item for a trip that he'll be talking about. So if you'd like to come on up, please, Steve, appreciate you being here tonight.
Well, unfortunately, I didn't bring any band uniforms or a two-month-old, so I feel like I've been upstaged a little bit. So, this is it. And I also didn't know that Mr. McLaughlin was going to get recognized, so I feel at liberty to tell this story, if I could. It's really quick. This weekend, I was at a wedding up north where Mr. McLaughlin used to be principal and head football coach. And without any prompting, I always like to listen to what is said around tables, and his name came up surprisingly, because I was with some Prairie Heights folks, and they had mentioned, without my prompting, how much of a class act he was when he coached up there. And so, it filled me with pride knowing that I, that he, he's my principal, and he's the leader of our building, so thank you very much for that.
Lynn's your advisor.
Yeah, and we haven't had our final meeting either yet. So I have this great story about Lynn Brown. About this time last year, I quote Matt Roth as saying, "I assume that this trip is going to become an annual thing." And, and thus far, it, it looks like it's, is going to become an annual thing. Some, some good news comes along with that, and that is that the attendance in our APs class has increased by 680 percent. If you remember, last time we were here and we gave a presentation, I had my entire class of five students here. So, I, next time we come and present, it'll be 39 students, hopefully. So, I'm super excited on a personal level that there are kids at Huntington North High School that want to challenge themselves with, with rigor and toughness. Because, yeah, there are some things that go along with the class, but the bottom line is, it's a college class, and it's hard. And I'm really proud of the kids for, for stepping up and stepping out and saying, "Hey, I can do this," and, and have some fun while we do that. So, as you might guess, our, our planning for this number of students is a little different from planning for five students. And so, you'll see on the field trip request this time, there have been some modifications in some of the activities. But that being said, there's only one activity that has changed. Everything else is just predominantly just changed locations. I'm also working with a gentleman by the name of Kenny Ports, who owns A1A Transportation Services out of Fort Lauderdale, Miami. And he and I have been working really, really close in getting kids safely to, to all the locations that we need to, and he's been phenomenal to work with. I also had to obviously go with a larger venue for where we do our research, and so we'll be working with CBase, which is a nonprofit that works close with Mo Marine Laboratory down in Summerlin Key. And so, because I unfortunately had to change a few of the items that the students had the opportunity to do from last year, I was actually able to work with Kenny and, and move, move, shift, shift some things around and get kids some additional opportunities. I've contacted the folks at, for example, at Marathon Key, and we're going to work with, with, with their nonprofits there and do a beach cleanup and some other things like that. So, I'm also working with the property manager at Curry Hammock State Park, which is further up the Keys, and we're going to do some, some kayaking, mangrove kayaking and things like that. So, the, the price is about the same as it was last year. Obviously, we're, we'll be doing some fundraising and things like that. So, I'm, I'm super excited for this number of kids to, to, you know, experience the, the third, third largest coral reef on our planet, and I, I'm just beyond excited. As you might guess, it's kind of like when you win the lottery, you know, you find out who your friends are. And so, Mr. McLaughlin comes into my room about every week, just kind of hangs around that period, and I think I'm starting to discover why now. So, he wants to go snorkeling, I discovered. So, I would be more than happy and willing to take any questions or, or concerns that anybody has.
I would just say, Mr. Park, thank you. What an experience for our kids. We're blessed, truly blessed to have you in our district and to have you teaching our students. I hear your name often and frequently from our students and our parents and throughout our community. You make us all proud, and I'm not surprised in any the least that you have 39 this year, because what I hear from kids, if Mr. Park's teaching it, you want to be in that class. And so, we are grateful for you and everything that you do for our kids in this district, so thank you.
Well, a couple, I don't know, a couple months ago, I was at a conference over the summer, and I sent an email, I think almost immediately, to a few of you, because the teachers were just, there was a harping on their leadership, you know, they won't do this, they won't do that. And I was like, to have all of you on board and administrators and Lynn on board, willing to take risks and, you know, get kids opportunities and experiences, it's just, it means the world to me to be able to teach here. And, and kudos to all of you for, for supporting things that give kids life experiences and a little edge when it comes to college experiences as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, we'll go on now to item E1, Alive and Well Agreements for 23, 24.
Tonight, Meg Freeson is here, board and community for E1, 2, and 3, but before she talks a little bit about those, I just want to take time to recognize Meg. Meg does a tremendous job in this corporation. She has a lot of expertise. She advises lots of different groups, but in my opinion, her most, most impressive part of what she does is she absolutely is dedicated to the kids and families of our community to make sure they are okay, not just academically, not just physically with health, but also mentally as well. And so, she is an asset that I've not seen in other corporations on her absolute passion, and she's driven to make sure the kids at Huntington schools are looked after. And so, I know that we ask a lot of Meg, but we also appreciate you very much, Meg.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to be covering 1, 2, and 3. So, 1, Alive and Well, this is a program that we brought to our schools last year, and so this isn't a program that is necessarily new, but we wanted to bring it back. So, what we're doing is we're offering three mental health sessions for our kids, and we're going to be doing this in sixth grade and eighth grade in both Crestview and Riverview schools. And so then you might say, "What about seventh graders?" But we are using a program in seventh grade called Lifelines that's taught by YSB, which specifically focuses on suicide prevention. So, we'll have some sort of class for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, all focusing on mental health or suicide prevention in both schools. The only difference really is that last year, we didn't have a coordinated effort where the exact same education was going to be seen at both schools, so we're excited that we're partnering together, and the health teachers are on board, the principals are on board, so we're excited to bring that back. Do I have to pause?
Yeah, I think, great, it's board action for each one, and just for the board's information, this is paid for. 1, 2, and 3 are all based on a grant. And so, it, it's one that's Meg worked very hard for and brings a lot of wonderful things to our district.
Okay, so on item E1, would anyone like to make a motion regarding the two contracts for Alive and Well, one with Crestview and one with Riverview?
Motion to accept the Alive and Well Agreement for 2023, 24 for Crestview and Riverview Middle Schools.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the two agreements. Motion passes five to zero, and I'll go to E2, Creating Positive Relationships.
So, if you think that creating positive relationships sounds familiar, it's because we've been doing it for like 15 years. So, this is a program that we use to teach abstinence to kids, and it has been well-received in the past. We're not sure if we're going to continue to move forward with this in the future, just because we have excellent talented teachers in our district, and our health teachers are no exception. And so, we're looking at this curriculum. We want to use it this year, but we're really looking at what is it that our students need in like a growing and changing world. Again, we're always going to come back to abstinence focus, because that's important and that's what we want to teach. But we're wanting our health teachers to also have a chance to really look at the curriculum. So, we're going to keep going forward with creating positive relationships. We've had, like I said, a contract with them for the last 15 years and continue working with them this year. And again, this will be paid for out of the grant, and it's the same at both Crestview and Riverview.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the Creating Positive Relationships Agreement?
Motion to accept the Creative Positive Relationships Agreement for Crestview and Riverview Middle Schools for 23, 24 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think Kevin beat him by a little bit there.
I didn't even hear you.
He what?
I didn't even hear you.
No.
Turned me out.
Any questions, comments, or discussion?
What age group does this curriculum?
Six, seventh, and eighth.
All three?
Yeah. And it's developmentally different based on the age and grade that the kids are at.
Okay.
All right, hearing nothing else, we'll vote on the motion to approve this contract. All right, motion passes five, zero. Now go to E3, Extended Day 2023, 24.
Okay, I'm really excited about this program, and I'm hoping that you received like a one-pager about this, maybe in a board packet. Okay, so you've been able to review that. So, last year, we had some ESAR, am I saying that right?
Right.
ESAR funds, okay, ESAR funds that paid for us to be able to offer something called Extended Day. And so, this is for kids who are not doing the best in their classes or need some sort of extra help. And I got to see this happening at Crestview and Riverview last year, and I was just like, this is an awesome program. This is really good for our students. They need this. And this isn't just students who need help academically, like I see the role modeling and the relationships that are happening after school with these teachers. And just, you know, I love the program. I usually stay late at work, and so I'm like seeing all these kids walk out, and they're accomplishing things. They're getting their assignments done. And so, when the principals came, you know, to ask about Extended Day this year, it was like, hey, those funds aren't available, so we're not going to be able to do that program this year. And I said, "Wait, we have funds available." And so, we looked at Extended Day and said, "How can we make this not just Extended Day, but a healthier Extended Day?" And so, we're taking the idea of Extended Day, but putting in like a little healthy component to it. So, the American Academy of Pediatrics put out this position statement, and it says, "Cognitive processing and academic performance depend on regular breaks from concentrated classroom work." So, we thought, what if we took these kids who are going to be just coming after school, they're already tired, they already need a break, and we're going to ask them to do more work? So, what we're going to do is, we've created a program where the kids have a choice board, and so they'll work on a certain amount of academic homework. And when you look at research, really, kids can only concentrate for like 18 minutes at a time. I'm probably already talking too much for all of you to like concentrate on my words. So, we're going to have them do some homework, get some stuff done, and then they're going to take a break. They'll have a choice board, and they'll be able to do something like go for a walk, or do pushups or situps, or do something like with their bodies to move. And again, we'll talk about the importance of taking breaks, but then getting back to your work so that you can get finished. So, we're using part of the grant money not only to fund the teachers that are going to be teaching in this program, but also every teacher will get kind of like a kit, and it'll have jump ropes and yoga mats and all sorts of like fun things for the kids to do. And so, those kits will be given to each teacher as they take on the class, and then every kid will have a choice board, and when it's time to take a break, they'll choose something to do that'll get their blood moving, and then they'll get back to work after that. So, I'm really excited about kind of tweaking this program and making it a little bit more healthy, but still having Extended Day provided for those students in need.
This will be Riverview and Crestview as well, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion regarding the proposed Extended Day?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Extended Day Program as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, or discussion? I'd say thank you for finding a way to keep it. It seems like a tremendous opportunity for those students that just need a little help. All right, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to approve. Motion passes five, zero, and thank you.
Thanks, Meg.
Now go to E4, Agreement Between HCCSC and Manchester University.
Tonight, you have before you an agreement that would allow us to work with Manchester University in placement of student teachers' practicum experiences, field experiences for the next five years with Manchester University. We're just asking for your approval for 2023 to 2028, and your approval of that agreement to work with Manchester University.
All right, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this proposed agreement?
Motion to approve the five-year agreement with Manchester University.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, or discussion? I'm assuming this is something they needed from us?
Correct, yes.
All right, hearing nothing further, we'll vote on the motion to approve. That motion passes five, zero. Now go to E5, Fort Wayne Philharmonic and HCCSC MOU.
Each year, we bring before you the Fort Wayne Philharmonic Memorandum of Understanding. This allows our six elementary schools to take part, where they'll have an ensemble from the Fort Wayne Philharmonic that will come to each elementary school and present about a 35-minute little mini-concert. And I'd like to do a shout-out to the La Fontaine Arts Council for their- And I'd like to do a shout-out to the LaFontaine Arts Council for their sponsorship, and this happens on a yearly basis. And so, just asking for approval to move forward.
All right, anyone like to make a motion regarding this agreement?
I'll make a motion that we accept the agreement Memorandum of Understanding between Fort Wayne Philharmonic, HCCSC, 2023-2024. Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve. Motion passes five-zero. Item E6 is a proposed agreement between HCCSC and Parkview YMCA.
You will find in your board packet the new agreement between ourselves and YMCA for the use of the pool. We have gone 15 years without an increase within the usage of using the pool, primarily for our swim teams, but there's also some other items that go on with our school district and the Y. What you see there under number three of the new contract are the usage fees and compensation. I appreciate Mr. Lattes willingness to work with us on this, and so, we are signing a multi-year agreement with them with incremental increases throughout the next five years. Again, I think it's only fair, since it hasn't gone up in the 15 years that we have worked with them. And I, in comparing this to what I think the norm is, I think it's very fair. So, I'm just asking for your approval of this agreement.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trout. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the proposed agreement with the Y?
I'll make a motion that we approve the pool agreement with the Huntington YMCA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve. Motion passes five-zero. We'll now go to the Consent Agenda F1 through 15.
I'd like to highlight in F7, the new certified employees. Stacy Ball, first-grade teacher at Andrews, and Casey Pulver, speech-language pathologist for the special services. Also, thank you, continued thank you to our community for their continued donations to our school district this week totaling $13,741. Flint Springs is requesting permission to accept a donation, the amount of $531 from donors choose to Miss Swagener's to improve the writing stations in her classroom. Lincoln Elementary is requesting permission to accept a donation of $400 from Bendix Corporation to use to supplement needed school supplies for students in classrooms. Roanoke Elementary School is requesting permission to accept a donation of $160 from Central Christian Church Women's Fellowship to be used for Roanoke Rock Star Integrity Program. Salmon Elementary School is requesting permission to accept seven donations. Six were used to support the robotics program. $250 from Aaron Hacker with North 40 West 85 LLC. $100 from Nadine Brown with Nadine's Cakes Cookies Catering. $200 from Danielle Pelts and Amber Decker with Living Forward ABA LLC. $100 from Ricky Lang Furnish. $500 from Scott and Marla Benginger with Scott Benginger Farms, Inc. And $100 from Dirk Hayward with Turf, excuse me, Tough Stuff Mowing. The last donation, the amount of $400 from Steve Park with Basic Elements Design to be used for the Donuts with Grown Ups. Lastly, North High School is requesting permission to accept a donation of, excuse me, of various props valued at approximately $11,000 from portraits by Jolene to be used by the drama department. So, I'm requesting your approval of all the consent-related agenda items.
All right, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before we vote, would anyone like to remove a specific numbered item and vote on it separate from the rest? Okay, hearing no request on that. Is there any discussion, question, or comments about the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. That motion passes five to zero, so we will now go to G1, September 2023 Financial Reports.
Good evening. Thank you, President Roth, Superintendent Trout, members of the board. I bring to you this evening the September monthly financials, and we will start with the Education Fund. And then, you'll see here with the Education Fund what may look different for the budget month actuals. We have more payrolls. We have that twice a year, where we have more payrolls in one month than another. So, if you're comparing months, you'll see that slightly higher than some other months. So, we're right on target with our year-to-date actuals versus our estimated revenues for that. And then, you'll also see the expenditures right on target, a little over $23 million year-to-date, and then along with our transfers. And you'll see our cash balance at $14.6 million minus some outstanding purchase orders, a little over $95,000, which brings our available balance down to 14.5. So, right at this time of year, you'll see over to the right, our little box where we show we're about a little under 75% of the year through, and we've received 80% of our estimated revenue, which is always good to see that we're higher than anticipated for this time of year. Because you've got to remember, we do these budgets over, you know, a year to year and a half ahead of time. So, at that time, that was our estimated revenue. So, that's good that we're bringing in more revenue than originally estimated. And then, also for our budget expended, you'll see that approximately 71%. So, we're right on target for this time of year from what we expected for our expenditures for our Education Fund. And then, next, we have our Debt Service Fund, and you'll see that there isn't any action here in September for our Debt Service Fund, which is by design, our Debt Service Fund, the money that we receive comes in twice a year, and most of the money is received between May and June, but usually by June 30th, and then also November, and then the big amount December 30th, 31st, somewhere around there. And then, our expenditures are per our amortization schedules for our bonds and our leases and those type of things that we also pay twice a year in June and December. So, that's why throughout the rest of the year, you usually see zero in the month-to-date actuals. So, we're right on target for these funds also. And then, next, you'll see our other major fund, our Operations Fund, which in tandem goes with our Education Fund. Those are our two main funds. And then, too, for this one, you'll see our budget year-to-date for revenue is just shy of $9 million. And our expenditures, you'll see there a little over $11 million. So, our fund balance for this, this fund is approximately $1.578 million, which is common for this time of year due to the main revenue of this fund being property taxes. So, what I would just state is that property taxes usually come in June and December. So, you'll see the cash balance going down in Operations Fund by design because of the most of the revenue will come then in December. So, that is very, very common. And then, you'll see here with our percent of revenue in the box, the lower box there is 62%, and the percent of the year budget is 74%. And just remember, this is our Operations Fund, which our capital max hits for our property tax caps that we have. So, even though we might be expecting, you know, just a certain amount of revenue, remember that our patrons have a cap on what we can collect for their taxes, so that 1% and 2% depending on the type of ownership that they have, and that comes from this fund. So, that is very common for us to have a lower amount received due to those property tax caps. So, we balance that within the year, before the year-end. And you'll see our expended is right on target with our 67% of expended out of this fund. So, we're right on target as expected for this fund. And then, next, you'll see our Food Service Fund. In just showing the difference between this year and last year, you'll see those differences for the month, and then our year-to-date actuals, and then along with the expenditures for this year. And you'll see that by design, we're spending more in this fund because our cash balance was over the threshold allowed by law, and that also was by design. We were collecting dollars or had additional dollars in this fund to be able to allocate for our projects that we're doing. So, we're spending down that, those dollars in, to be in compliance and also to help with some of our predetermined construction projects where we are renovating some cafeteries and things like that. So, this fund also is right on target for what we anticipated for this time of year. And then, last but not least, is our Curricular Materials Fund, aka Textbook Reimbursement Fund. As a reminder to the board and the public, that this is the fund where we are not charging students for regular textbook rentals anymore per legislative session starting July 1st. But we will be receiving an annual dispersment from the state based on a very convoluted formula from what schools in the entire state of Indiana spend for that year, and then divided by the ADM, the Official Average Daily Membership Count for all the districts in Indiana. So, back when the legislative session ended, it was going to be approximately 150 at that time, 150 per student. But now, we will, those will be known by this next month, since the official ADM date was October 2nd. So, the state is analyzing that data along with reportings from the districts for the month of October, that they will submit their expenditures for the year of what they've spent on textbooks, and that goes into their formula, and they're supposed to release those distribution amounts later in November, and then we receive the dollars in December every year. So, we are very fortunate here that at Huntington, that we do have a cash reserves balance of 1.7 million, that helps us get through the next 12 to 18 months as the state figures out that type of formula and this being all-new. So, then, we'll know what is anticipated each December. But we do have enough funds to get us through to be able to still purchase materials until that annual amount is known. So, this fund is very healthy at the 1.7 million, and we're able to purchase the curricular materials as we have in the past for our districts, so we do not have to worry about shortchanging, so to speak, or underutilizing our current expenditures and being able to supply what's needed for our students here in Huntington.
Do we think that the, that this state will reconsider or reevaluate after this first year?
Yes, we do. If you've already heard, as I anticipated in the past when all this came down, is I heard that, one, that the state will be looking at this in the next biennium. However, in the meantime, they are looking at all different types of grants and people from all over that are, plan on offering grants to supplement what schools are not going to be receiving in that dispersment. So, I believe that there will be more to come in this next six to eight months of different grants offering for the supplemental materials, the consumable materials that wasn't in this formula, that of course, wasn't publicized at the time that this change happened. And it was kind of publicized that, oh, you know, there'll be no more fees for, and we're covering all the fees. That was not accurate. They are covering some of the textbook rental portions of the fees, but none of the consumable or supplementals. When you think of science class and dissecting or biology and those type of things, those were considered consumable supplies, and now, there's legislative legal ramifications to that, and we see in the future that that will be changed, and a lot of those will be incorporated into the future dispersments. So, with that, we have, the legislative session approved $160 million for this biennium. So, that's why they wouldn't be able to do anything until the next biennium opens up. So, that's why we see these other grants and things that will be coming up to help supplement some of that for districts. You've got to think, here at Huntington, we're very fortunate that we do have some reserve funds available, so we do not have that break in instructional supplies and that for our students. But there are a lot of districts that do not have that, that are hanging by threads and trying to figure out what to do for their students in the meantime.
But I would guess, we're guesstimating, that that's a shortfall for us, about $3,000 to $400,000.
That's correct.
So, hopefully, we can supplement that through the grant process or whatever. But, Tim, I think it's very safe to say we're in that $3,000 to $400,000 range of shortfall.
Correct.
So...
All right, thank you. Would anyone like to make a recommend, or would anyone like to make a motion regarding the September 2023 Financial Reports?
I'll make a motion that we approve the September 23 Financial Reports as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, or further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the financial reports for Motion passes five-zero. We'll now go to G2, Adoption of 2024 Budget Form 4.
Great, thank you. The next, what is it, five items, five or so items that we have pertain to the 2024 budget process. If you recall, as I've stated in the past, that we have three main steps to the budget process. The first step is to have a budget workshop where we hold, and we did that back in September. And then, the second process, and that's asking for permission to advertise at the same time. So, this information was advertised on our school website and also on the public gateway state website as required. And then, the second step is where we hold public hearings, and we held that in the second board meeting in September. And that also, all that information was publicized at the same time, noticed to taxpayers at that time. And then, this last step is the adoption of the budget. So, attached in your board docs and on the screen is the Budget Form 4, and this is a combination of all that information. Nothing has changed from what has been advertised. So, you'll see our four funds on here, our rainy day, our debt service, our education, and our operations funds. And for the budget appropriations, and that is the approval to spend these amounts in 2024. And then, the proposed adopted tax levy. And just to remind you that these are advertised slightly higher. So, when the state works our budget, then they tweak it and send back what's called a 1782 notice, which is a preliminary budget order. And then, we look through that, and then they're certified after that. So, we always have to make sure that we advertise high enough, because whatever comes from that, if we haven't advertised enough, then they hold us to that lower amount, whatever is the lower of the two. So, that's why you'll see some of the budget amounts and the levies that we advertise just slightly higher than what they'll come in. So, I just remind everyone that during that time. And then, also, the adopted tax rates for those funds, and the same thing applies to those. So, I would ask the board for approval for this Budget Form 4 as presented.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion regarding the proposed Budget Form 4?
Motion to approve the 2024 Budget Form 4.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion before we vote? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve. Motion passes 5-0. Now, go to G3.
Great. Next, the board you'll see is the, a resolution in your pocket to adopt the capital projects plan. So, same thing with the capital projects plan has been advertised through the gateway website, the state's website, and also on our website. So, this is just the resolution to approve the capital projects plan as advertised and presented previously.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the proposed capital projects plan for 2024?
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2024 capital projects plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the 2024 capital projects plan. Motion passes 5-0. Now, go to G4, bus replacement plan.
Sure. Next, you'll see a resolution to adopt the bus replacement plan. And this is in the same fashion as the capital projects plan. The plan has been advertised through the state gateway website and also on our district website. So, this is a resolution asking the board to approve as the bus replacement plan has been advertised and previously presented.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the bus replacement plan?
Motion. Motion to adopt the 2024 bus replacement plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion before we vote? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the bus replacement plan. Motion passes 5-0. Now, G5, approve, or request to approve resolution to reduce budgets.
Yes. What this is, and some, some of you may see this and say, oh, it says 2023, Becky. Just want to explain what this is, is when we receive the 1782 notice for our preliminary budget order for 2024, during that process, they look at what's called a Form 4B. And that is a detailed analysis of what we anticipating receiving for the remainder of this year till December and also spending through December, along with next year in 2024. So, when they start working our 1782 notice, sometimes they may need some, these numbers might be different than what was originally estimated. So, this gives us the approval to say, yes, you can change those to the final amounts of X, Y, and Z in order to be able to fund our 2024. We have no problem with that here, but this is just a customary resolution that if we want to change any of the numbers from 2023 from the estimates in order to fully fund our 2024 budgets, then we're able to do so.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the proposed resolution to reduce budgets?
Motion to approve the resolution to reduce budgets.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments before we vote? All right. Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve this resolution. Motion passes 5-0. Now, go to item G6, proposed resolution to transfer funds.
Sure. This resolution, if, take you back in time to 2019, when we, prior to that, we had the old general fund, and then we had the capital projects fund, the bus replacement, and the transportation operations fund. Those were all dissected into four different quadrants. And two of those quadrants from general fund stayed and then were named into an education fund. So, they dissolved the old general fund. And then, the other two buckets that used to be in the general fund were moved to a new fund called operations, along with what was the capital projects fund, the bus replacement, and the transportation operations fund. So, those were all changed into two new funds, our education fund and our operations fund. However, the, the revenue that we receive from our ADM count, our average daily membership count, our tuition support from the, from the state, AKA basic grant, they have all these different names, it confused a lot of people. But, all that gets deposited solely into our education fund. The law allows us to transfer from our education fund into our operations fund from those other two buckets that were moved from the old general fund into the new operations fund. Since they used to have four and that money's still going in there, it lets us transfer the needed dollars for those expenditures of those other two buckets that were transferred to the new operations fund. So, this is a customary resolution that we asked the board for approval for, for the calendar year of 2024 to allow us to do those transfers as needed.
All right. Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this proposed resolution?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to transfer funds from the education fund to the operations fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the resolution. Motion passes 5 to 0. Now, to G7, resolution to deposit funds.
Great. Thank you very much. Last but not least, this is a resolution that we ask the, the board to approve each year. And this is due to, we, we receive a local income tax and interest from our bank accounts. And this has given us the ability to deposit those funds into our operations fund. So, this is something customary that districts do when they have those type of funds of revenue that come in to designate which fund that they're putting them in. And 99% of the districts in Indiana put this in their operations fund. So, this continues with that, and we're asking the board for approval for us to be able to deposit the local income tax and interest into our operations fund.
All right. Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the proposed resolution to deposit funds?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to deposit funds as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion before we vote? All right. Hearing nothing, we'll vote on the motion to approve this resolution. Motion passes 5-0. Now, go to G8. And thank you for all those presentations. Now, go to G8, preliminary bond resolution.
Tyler, you've been very patient, my friend, for an hour and 10 minutes or so, waiting your turn here this evening. But, we're grateful to have Tyler Lefeholtz to here with us today, Director at Baker Tilly, who will be going through with us some details today about the adoption of the 2023 preliminary bond resolution. So, Tyler, welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you for having me.
Yep.
As Mr. Trout said, I'm Tyler Lefeholtz of Baker Tilly. And I'll be walking through the financial implications of a proposed bond issue. In my presentation, I'll start off with.
Yeah. Go ahead and hit the, it's just not pulling up. Yeah. I don't know what happened. Try it this way.
Try it that way.
There we go.
So, here you'll see what your current outstanding debt looks like. And as you can see, maybe, maybe we could zoom in a little. Your 2020 GEO bonds and your 2016 refunding bonds will be paid off at the end of this year. So, you'll be seeing a drop in your total annual payments, your outstanding bonds beginning next year. And what that allows you to do is to fill that drop in with some additional bonds that would allow you to do some projects around the school district. The next page just shows the detail of that slide. But, you can go ahead and go to the next one, which is the calculation of your general obligation bonding capacity. And that is 2% of 1/3 of your NAB's value. So, since your 2024 NAV is a little over $2 million, $2 billion, taking out the outstanding that you currently have, that leaves you with capacity to issue up to $12.6 million in GEO bonds. So, anything you issue lower than that, you can't issue as general obligation debt. So, what we've done is we've structured a, if you want to go to the, go ahead and go to the next page, $6.105 million GEO bond to be paid back in a little over three years. Using conservative interest rates, we estimate the interest expense over the life of the bonds to be a little over $500,000. And then, the way we have structured these is to raise your debt service fund tax rate by about 4 cents, which would take you to about 39 cents. And that raise is really just taking you back up to where you were in 2022. You did have a slight drop this year. You went from almost 39 cents down to 34.63 cents. So, the way that they're structured for now is taking that up to 39 cents. And the next page will give you a better visual of that. And you can see the darker gray bars there are what would be for this 2023 bond issue. And the black line is showing what we estimate your debt service fund tax rate to be. So, you can see that we take that up to about 39 cents for two years, and then you'd see a drop in 2026. So, with that drop coming in 2026, that would give you the ability or flexibility to issue additional debt in 2025 to keep the rate up where it is or letting the rate drop at that point. Next page is just the detail of that slide. The page after that will show you the summary of estimated taxpayer impact. So, since I said this would increase the debt service tax rate by about 4.3 cents, this just shows you the impact that would have on different types of taxpayers. I won't read through every number here, but you can see the median home value within the district is about $113,000. And that taxpayer would see an annual impact of about $18.55 for every acre of agricultural land. You'd see about an 83 cent impact. And for every $100,000 of rental or commercial property, you'd see an impact of $43.70 per year. And that is all I have for my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Becky, your thoughts and comments here too? I know that they would love to hear those.
Sure. As Tyler was talking, I just want to remind the board, as we've previously discussed during the budgeting process and the workshop that we had, that our goal is to maintain the tax rate to be stable from this point forward. As you know, in the past, it's kind of, kind of roller coaster, what I call it, where it goes down and then goes back up and goes down. I, I prefer not to see that, and I know the board prefers not to see that in the future. So, that's why we are having this general obligation bond to help that not to go down again. And then, also, our future plans of other projects that we have planned in 2025, then for 2026, this gives us the opportunity to do several different scenarios where we could go for another, you know, $6 million general obligation bond or a larger lease or something like that, where we can do that over multiple years. But, no matter what we do in the future, we want to keep it at that same amount moving forward. So, our taxpayers do not see a spike and then a drop in time. So, that is our goal, to bring that back to you and later in 2025, as these fall off and other things, to be able to stabilize that tax rate in the future.
So, not to oversimplify, but if we had the capacity to borrow $12.6 million, that would obviously see, result in an increase in the tax rate above the current.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. And there's different legislative things that, that pass where you would have to go through a different process to, to be able to, you know, do 18 million. So, it would take a whole different process to do at that time. And as you recall, we, we currently have a $25 million lease that we're working on. So, we have a lot of construction projects on the horizon. So, that is another reason why we chose to do the 6 million instead of something even higher and go through a different process because we're already in the mix of doing that and wanted to be able to stabilize those construction projects also. Because if not, then it would be very hard to hold school if we were doing construction in every single school, you know, to that avail. So, we wanted to be able to do it in phases with our dollars available and also to keep the tax rate stable.
And just for someone who doesn't follow this that much, it's not 6 million, it's not 6.1 each year for three years. It's 6.1 million that is paid off over a three-year period.
Absolutely. Where we get the dollars, we're able to do our projects with that. And then, we have what's called an amortization schedule where we pay that back. And that's what we do through that debt service fund that I talked about tonight with our financials, and it's done through that fund.
Okay.
So, we have before the board here for this agenda item, Tyler, a preliminary bond resolution. And you want to talk to us a little bit about that and what they would be approving then this evening, moving forward then?
I don't want to step on Bond Council's toes too much. This is really their document. But, basically, what you're approving today is submitting notices.
Right.
For the public hearing that would take place next month.
Right.
So, so the, the numbers in here are preliminary. You really are just setting maximums and the formal approval would happen next month.
Right. And I understand that. Becky, anything you want to add to that? Do you agree with that? I'm sure so.
Yes. That, that's exactly what it does. And then, it also gives you a brief description of the general ICE things that you can do with this, this bond money. And what we plan on doing is just general construction projects throughout the, throughout the district. So, we put that generalization in as an explanation of the bonds. And like he says, this gives all the legalities that we have for the, the amount and the period and those type of estimations right now.
Tyler, I'm grateful for your work too. This is enormously helpful as we're working with our community to understand how we're trying to be fiscally responsible throughout this process. Along doing that, I know we're going to see a lot more of you here in the near future, you and Eric from ICE Miller, as you try to help us through the next several years about what we're going to be doing too. So, I know a lot of those meetings are going to occur during the calendar year of '24. But, this evening, what we're asking for your approval of is this preliminary bond resolution in your board packet this evening.
All right. With that recommendation, I'll entertain a motion from the board regarding the proposed resolution.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2023 preliminary bond resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional questions, comments, or discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the resolution. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. And we'll move on to G9, 2023 reimbursement resolution.
Becky, you want to explain to this, just briefly, what we got here before us here then?
I sure will. And what this does, this is a resolution from Bond Council that allows the district to be reimbursed from anything that we pay out prior to selling the bonds and receiving the cash proceeds. So, what this does is this allows the bond proceeds that we receive to be able to reimburse the district in case we pay anything ahead of time. So, say that we needed to pay a bill for, you know, Baker Tilly, for their. time. So say that we needed to pay a bill for, you know, Baker Tilly, for their services, or bond council, or anything else, standard empires, there's a lot of different things that go into these bond sales. So if any of those come due before we receive those dollars, we pay it from the district's dollars, and then this allows us to reimburse ourselves through those bond proceeds.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion regarding this last proposed resolution?
Motion to approve the 2023 reimbursement resolution as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll go Kevin again. Before we vote, are there any questions, comments, or further discussion on these matters? All right, hearing nothing further, we'll vote on the motion to approve.
Tyler, Becky, thank you. I appreciate both of you very much, and helping us through this process. So again, thank you. I appreciate you. Yep.
All right, motion passes five zero. We'll now go to H one, independent contractor agreement for AE Design Services.
Yes, before you this evening, board, what we have is an agreement between us and Veridian, architectural firm. This agreement is allowing them to continue to move forward with their work, specifically in the family and consumer science area of Huntington North High School for renovation. So we're just asking for your approval.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion regarding the proposed agreements with Veridian?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with Veridian for the fax department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve. Motion passes five zero. We'll now go to I one, capital asset policies.
Yes, the next two items, we are updating our school board policies. This is a first reading. This is specifically for the capital asset policies of 7450 and 7455. This is only a first reading. We'll ask for final approval at the November board meeting. This brings us in compliance with the recent law changes and updates. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on anything specific with this. But this is just putting this before you to let you see the changes we're going to make, and just answer any questions you may have this evening.
Any questions? All right, then we'll move on to I two.
Same thing. These are policies 1662, 3362, 4362, and 5517. These are all the anti-harassment policies. This is for administration, professional staff, support staff, and students. And again, this is just a first reading. We are now, have begun the process of updating school board policies. And so over the next few months, this is maybe the first that we bring to you, but this is by far not the least that we're going to bring to you. There'll be several here over the next several months. And so I'm just bringing this again for a first reading to answer any questions or receive any comments that you may have about these items.
Any other question, or any questions?
So how come they can't just lump them all in one? Why does there have to, because they basically all read the same?
I understand that, but by statute, we have to have one for each employee group. Okay, that's my answer.
We can't all just be employees and all be students.
We have to be, we have to be, we have to be in each one of these categories.
I figured there was a good reason.
Yeah, that's it.
If someone wanted to take a look at these, where could they go find it?
Cindy, they are on board docs currently.
They are. Yes, if you.
Because it's under the public content part, right?
Right. You can go to our corporation website, and about midway down the page on the right-hand side, there's current school board meeting agenda. If you click on that, it will take you to board docs, the public site. On the top right-hand corner of the black bar, there is a policy section there. You click that, and you can see all the policies, administrative guidelines, and forms that are in place for the district that have been approved by the board.
And these all, all these changes come from Niola?
Correct, currently, right now. That's correct.
All right, hearing nothing further, we'll go on to J one, items of discussion by board members. I think we have a home sectional football game.
Correct.
Friday night. So if you're able to attend and cheer on the Vikings, head out there, I'm guessing kickoff is at seven?
Seven, yes.
So, anything else? All right, under I two, the next regular scheduled board, I'm sorry, J two, the next regular scheduled board meeting will be located in the Huntington North Cafeteria, November 13, 2023. We thank Salamoni for having us here for the last five years.
Several.
Several years, so. So don't forget, the next meeting is at Huntington North, November 13. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned, but don't go any-